I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, March 9, 2020. Ms. Lobek, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember McCune, Councilmember Boepp, Councilmember Bertolino, Councilmember Dodwell, Councilmember Remy, Councilmember Edens, Councilmember Brosst, Councilmember Garitano, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Jordan, Councilmember McCutcheon, Councilmember Farmer, Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Bartoni, Councilmember Greg Noni.
Okay, thank you. No mayor comments or announcements for the work session. Next
to informational items, we have nine items before we go to action items. Is there anything under information that any member of the council would like to discuss or about which you have questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move into action items. The first, Joe, Department of Planning, request for funding for the parks and trail maintenance and stormwater management efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, I'll preface this presentation by noting I know it will probably be unpopular with some. However, as you know, during the preparation of the fiscal year 2020 budget, a number of difficult decisions were made relative to all of the departments associated with city government. That was inclusive of the Department of Planning and Parks. One major item that came out of that discussion was that the park maintenance line item, that which is used to maintain the majority of our parks and some of our trail connections, was reduced by $25,000. That amount, meaning going from $250,000 to $225,000, was understandable, given the budget parameters that were established early on in the fall of 2019. However, the problem that was identified at that time was that three new facilities would be brought online in 2020 for maintenance purposes. Those facilities included Phase 3 of Community Park, the John L. A. K. Memorial Trailhead, and Ward 5 Neighborhood Park. If all things were equal, the $25,000 may not have been such a major concern to the department, but again, three new facilities were already added to what was existing at the time. Also, over the course of the latter part of 2019 and now more so in 2020, the Watershed Erosion Task Force has been very busy trying to understand the erosion and flooding issues that exist within the nine watersheds of the City of Wildwood. Under the leadership of Dr. Remy and Rick Archeski and the participants, the volunteer participants, we've identified a number of locations throughout Wildwood where erosion problems are concerning by the property owners or by city personnel themselves. I say all of this because there are concerns, there are issues, and there are certainly steps the city needs to take to at least assess these erosion and flooding issues and understand how best to prioritize them so they can be presented to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Natural Resources, and others. How does this all fit with a proposed event? The Ad Hoc Events Committee of City Council made a recommendation at the end of February to transfer $35,000 to the Wildwood Business Association for an event in September of this year. Certainly, I am not second guessing the collective decision of five of the City Council members, nor do I necessarily say an event like that wouldn't be popular or well attended or needed. However, it's being done in the context of major budget reductions, not only to the Department of Planning and Parks, but the Department of Administration, and the Department of Public Works. Therefore, the department is respectfully requesting that if there is $35,000 available, that it be focused to our core mission, which is maintaining our parks and trails to a high standard, to responding to threatening conditions in our watersheds, and if not that, putting money toward repairing trails, streets, bridges, and other items of the public infrastructure. Certainly, this does not preclude the Wildwood Business Association from conducting the event. They would have to fund it from start to finish, not get a loan from the City of Wildwood. And again, I'll conclude by saying, I know this may not be a popular position, but I think it would be unfair if the city administrator and the director of the Department of Planning and Parks did not at least advise you of our concerns about this approach. So, thank you for your attention, and I do hope I did not offend anybody. I think I'm just doing my job.
Okay. Any member of the council wish to... So, Joe, what are you looking for exactly as far as action from the council?
There is an item to remove from this particular topic on work session that is a recommendation to proceed forward with the transfer of funds from, so to speak, the Wildwood Barbecue Bash to the, I believe, Beer, Bands, Barbecue Bash.
So, what would be different this year in terms of the transfer of funds versus past years when we spent $50,000 on the event and could have used the other, the money for parks and trails?
Well, up to this year, we've never had a budget reduction of such a significance relative to any of the line items in the Department of Planning and Parks, and I would go as far as to say the Department of Public Works. Secondly, and more importantly, the money that was spent by the City of Wildwood on the Wildwood Barbecue Bash had very strict parameters placed upon it by City Council, meaning it could only be used for public safety purposes, which meant the transportation network, the electric network, the vent setup and cleanup, the portable water closets and wash stations. And those contracts were made between the city and the individual contractors and managed by the city with those individual contractors. So, a very big difference is based upon what I'm understanding, how this is going to proceed.
I think we also paid for the rent for the property for the...
Yes, we did.
Okay. Councilor Remy?
Joe, this is actually good to hear, but there is another really big difference in the reduction from $51,000 to $35,000, which is at the proposed event. Unlike the one that we previously had offered $51,000 for, we're actually getting back $26,000 back to the city. So, the net loss to the city is about $9,000.
Then I would argue, Dr. Remy, give the WBA $9,000. The difference. What we're doing is providing a loan program to a private entity.
But what we're doing, actually, is we're providing an event that's going to be held here in town center, that's going to include businesses that are part of Wildwood in the town center, as it was, as far as I've been told, set up to do. I think it's a win-win for everyone to do it such that way, and it's going to provide a lot of different opportunities for different businesses within this locale to be able to present their offerings.
I understand what you're saying. I respectfully disagree.
Councilor Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vinnich, thank you very much for painting the picture for council members and residents and audience here this evening. I tend to agree with you. Given other services that have been cut to residents this year, I mean, it makes perfectly good sense. If we're going to shift money, let's do it so we put something back toward residents in something that could be more tangible than a party in that regard. So, I'll make the motion, go ahead and remove the recommendation for the Ad Hoc Events Committee for the barbecue event in 2020 from our agenda.
So, we have a motion to remove the event that'll be recommended for the barbecue bash. Is there a second to the motion, second by Councilor Greg Noni? Joe, I have another question. So, we have a budget of much more than $35,000. So, what is the reasoning for focusing solely on the barbecue bash allotment and not other parts of the budget where there might be something that, you know, either, as we sit here today, we haven't spent as much money on and we could reallocate it, we have lots of line items, or that we anticipate that to be the case. So, what's the reasoning for honing in on that particular event versus all of the multitude of other sources of potential funding for the trails and so forth?
Well, I'll speak from, I guess, a selfish standpoint in that the barbecue bash had always been under the purview of the Department of Planning and Parks. So, when the initial amount was reduced to $35,000 and then ultimately, the organizers decided to not move forward with the event, the money was retained in the Department of Planning and Parks budget. So, first and foremost, that's the home of the funds, and so that's why I'm at the podium and not necessarily our city administrator or our director of public works. And if the city council in its wisdom wants to spend that money elsewhere in the Department of Administration, the Department of Public Works, great. Those are our core responsibilities in many regards. But the reason, again, that the department is asking that this be considered is not so much that at the end of 2020, I hope we have a substantial reserve because we found ways to better bid our projects, our services, and we've saved money through the bidding process. We've cut corners, so to speak, retained the quality of services but cut corners to save money. I hope that's the case. But as we stand right now, if you go to any of our committee meetings, any of the commission meetings, the first thing that comes out of city council and city personnel's mouth is, how much does this cost? Can we do it for less and maintain the quality of service? So, we're thinking about it almost with every decision we make. And so, from that perspective, if we move forward tonight and say, yes, this event by the WBA should move forward, that money is, they'll start planning from that point forward on, and there's no turning back. That would not be fair to that organization. So, I guess I'm just saying, where we spend it, I don't care, but I think it should be on the core things we do to promote the public's health, safety, and welfare. And having barbecue and bands and beer, maybe that's part of that, I don't know. But I can tell you that I could use the money for park maintenance.
Right. So, just a few more questions. What is the total line item for, well, sorry, you're asking specifically for an additional $25,000, is that right, Joe?
I'd like to restore what we started with and what we've had for the last five to 10 years.
So, it's $25,000, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, what is the total line item for this in the budget that this would be added to if it occurs?
$225,000.
Currently?
Currently.
Budgeted, okay. And then a question for the city administrator. If the council wanted to find another place for the $25,000, are you aware in our multitude of line items where that might occur from?
I would agree with Director Vunich, and I made this comment, I think, at the Ad Hoc Events Committee when we met last week. If the funding originally came from the barbecue bash, I would support leaving those dollars in that department.
So, you don't think there's another line item anywhere we can find $25,000?
There's, well, I mean, I would have to dig into that a little bit more, but I did provide the list of reductions that were included in the 2020 budget, and I think every department was hit in one way or another. So, of those, I just, I would agree in principle with Director Vunich again, that if we're going to save dollars in a different department, I would prefer that those dollars stay in that department as well, regardless of the line item or the expenditure.
Councilor Werther?
Thank you. Sorry, I was just taking some notes here. Given that we've already gone through a reduction of resident services for the 2020 budget, when it comes, and we've had a lengthy discussion about calendars, no discussion about the recycling event, which is a very popular event, hundreds, if not thousands, of people participate in that, and it's a real service because people are clearing out things from their own homes, and I think it's a very valuable service in that regard. The reductions that have come from that, we spent a great deal of time talking about calendar events, photography contests, and other things. Some of us have been lectured on how you should do budgeting and not do budgeting at committee meetings and here at City Council. So, I think it's somewhat disingenuous for us to say, okay, let's go ahead and start moving money around when the council itself failed to even consider doing so with other resident services that have already been cut from the 2020 budget. Given where we're at, I would recommend, and I really strongly encourage this council to support removing, keeping these dollars in the parks maintenance budget so that the Erosion Task Force, so that our parks can be maintained during a 2020 year. And if the WBA needs assistance in terms of financial or otherwise, there are a number of entities that can support them, among them the Rotary, the West County Chamber, all of who participate, all of who make profits off the previous year's barbecue bash, because it's a major fundraiser for them in terms of what they sell. So, from that standpoint, I think there's plenty of opportunity for the WBA to move forward without the City of Wildwood providing funding. I think it's a matter of whether or not council wants to continue along the same thought process that it had put forward in cutting prior resident services and keeping a very lean budget. And when an opportunity comes up to go ahead and shift money within the department to go ahead and maintain our parks, as well as put money towards the Erosion Task Force for perhaps their additional studies, I think it's a smart way to go versus having an event.
So, before I call in, if I could, Councilor Bartoni, I just have another question. So, we just, the council passed the budget. We had $35,000 allotted to the former barbecue bash, if you will, and the $25,000 reduced from this. Why was this discussion not had at that point? What's the genesis for bringing it now?
The organizer, Frank Schmier, had not yet decided not to hold the event in Wildwood. That decision wasn't made, I believe, until either the beginning or middle part of February.
But the logic of using dollars in either direction would still apply whether he had done that or not, I think?
Understood. But again, traditionally, we've had the Wildwood Barbecue Bash for 11 years. The assumption was we'd have it for '12. And again, all the reasons that Dr. Remy spoke to about providing visibility to town center, charitable organizations that benefit from the event by selling different things, et cetera, those are all the rationales we used approximately 12 years ago to start the first barbecue bash, and I understand them completely. And as anyone in the room, I've attended them. I think they're great events, but parks maintenance, erosion problems with our threatening public and private properties, bridge inspections, culvert inspections, the list goes on where we cut. I just feel very strongly that we need to stick to our core missions when we have a budget scenario that required us to basically reduce in all departments, and if we have available money to put it back into those core efforts.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bartoni?
Thank you. So, is the motion on the floor to transfer the entire $35,000 that's earmarked for the barbecue bash back to the maintenance, or is it just 25 that he's requesting at this point?
May I clarify?
Actually, let's ask Joe, since he's the one who's suggesting it. Joe, what's the answer?
I would like to retain the full $35,000. The intent would be at mid-year to make the formal transfer of $25,000 back to parks maintenance. The remainder then would, from my perspective, would not be allocated until that August action, but that would go toward watershed erosion. We have two consultants that are working with us now. From what we saw on Saturday and learned on Saturday, we have a big task ahead of us, and I'd like to be able to address that task and not tell people we have to wait a half a year or a year before we could.
So, you're asking 35 to answer the question?
Well, what's in the budget line item, I guess, as the city administrator mentioned, I'd like to stay in the budget.
Which is 35. And Councilor Werther, that's your motion, is that correct?
That's exactly my motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Bartoni.
So, I've heard discussion about the WBA taking over the barbecue bash and doing kind of like a similar but different event. But did the council, did I miss something? Did we discuss that, that we're going to, you know, like, they can, I mean, if they want to do something, we're, by all means, we can support them doing it. But I don't remember having a conversation that the $35,000 that was earmarked for one event would transfer over to that event just because they said we'll take it over.
It's the third item on tonight's work session agenda for action.
Okay, but it wasn't discussed before today or anything like that? It wasn't like a done deal?
No, the Ad Hoc Committee had made a recommendation that's on tonight's work session agenda. The city administrator and I made the decision, and I'll take full responsibility. Don't look at Mr. Anslum, that you, it wouldn't do, the department, it wouldn't help the department to present this after a decision that had already been made, whether we should spend the money or not. I wanted to provide this perspective before you made that decision tonight.
Okay. So, and that answers that part. I mean, I guess at the end of the day, Joe, you got three more, so to speak, properties to maintain this year, and we're asking you to do more work with less money. Yeah, that's kind of, that'd be difficult for any of us, and that's a pretty easy way for me to understand what you are asking for here. You know, we have had to make, and, you know, the reason we're up here is because we have to do, we do have to make some tough decisions, and one person might want the calendar but doesn't care about the recycling event, the next person might care about the recycling event but doesn't care about the barbecue. I mean, eventually, it's, you know, we're not going to be able to sit up here and make everybody happy, and we're going to have to make some decisions that are going to upset some people, and those are, you know, calls that we have to answer and neighbors that we have to talk to. That being said, I mean, when we had this discussion originally on the budget, I wasn't a fan of the barbecue bash at the time anyway, because I thought the guy just didn't do a good job of running it. Now, that doesn't mean the WBA isn't going to do a better job, and I hope they do, and I don't, frankly, I don't see how they could do worse, especially where they're moving it, and it sounds like it's going to be a little bit more community involved instead of a for-profit type of adventure. I'm okay with that money going back, but I would also be okay with helping the WBA a little bit if it's, you know, I don't, I don't know about, I'm not a big fan of loaning them money. I mean, we're not a bank, you know, so I would be okay if we could, if we could find a $9,000 somewhere else, maybe for the WBA, or Joe could live with $26,000 instead of the 35. We could, you know, make more people happy, maybe not everybody, but at the end of the day, I think it's, the money is earmarked for that department, and Joe knows what he needs it for, and we are asking him to do more work with less money, and that's just probably a little bit unfair of us.
Councilor Edens?
Yep. So, in the Ad Hoc Committee, we did get an attachment by our city administrator that was concerned about the, kind of, the cost of staff time for current city events and future city events. But I completely understand, Director Vunich, where you're coming from. I do wish we would have had this conversation at the Ad Hoc Committee first. I think the logic of the committee was that residents were upset about decreased services and events, sort of the fun, frou-frou part of the budget that makes us feel like a community. I think the thought was that this was fairly well, well, not fairly well, well-planned, and that it was a one-for-one replacement, but had the benefit of returning any profit because it's a nonprofit doing this work. So, the thought was, well, we kept an event, we made it better and more local, and then we got anywhere from $18,000 to $26,000 left that we could throw back towards park maintenance. So, it was more than what we started with in the budget. And I think the other thought was with the Rotary Club sales, that that was also going to be a mechanism to continue the Winter Fest, which did not have a line item funding. So, from the committee's perspective, you know, at the time, it ticked all the boxes. And I think we did not hear an argument that this money should not be used for any event at all as a replacement, that it should just go back to the department ahead of time. So, I think that that's why we might be taken aback, again, because we thought it was a one-for-one replacement, but with money actually coming back that could go towards park maintenance. I wish if it was this much of an issue that there would have been no line item at all for the original barbecue event at all, because it would have preempted this conversation. And so, I understand your argument that it's right now in the purview of planning and parks and should therefore stay there. But had we maybe cut that money in the beginning, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all. And so, I just saw that the president of the WBA walk in. I do know that they, quite frankly, don't have the money and the budget to do these things on that scale by themselves. And so, I know that there's probably some other corporate sponsorship, so maybe if the parks maintenance is that dire, we can have a conversation about what it would look like if she had to have less money to begin with. So, maybe we can have Emily come up and kind of talk about some things that we learned in committee, and then if there was a change in funding, what that would look like.
Well, in response to a couple points, I was unable to attend the Ad Hoc Events Committee of City Council. It was not because I was not interested. I had another conflicting city meeting.
Right. It was the HPC meeting that I had to miss, yeah.
Yes. So, if I could have been there, I certainly would have, and at that time, I would have voiced the same concerns I'm voicing tonight. I appreciate events, and over the course of the last 20-plus years, we've increased events substantially. From a collective standpoint, we offer over 200 events to Wildwood residents and visitors at this stage. Some are the yoga classes for seniors that are offered here at a local business in Wildwood, to our major events like the Celebrate Wildwood Event, which now is inclusive of the Art Festival, which does draw 10,000-plus people on that, on any given day, if the weather cooperates. So, I certainly understand what being taken aback. It was not my intent. Certainly, this was posted, I believe, on Thursday morning, and if there were, if there were concerns, I would have been more than glad to express them to you at that time, Thursday and Friday, even over the weekend. It's not that I have a grudge to pick with the WBA, but again, my principal reason to be at this podium is we have parks that need maintenance. We spent $257,000 last year on park maintenance, and that was a relatively good year because we didn't have the flooding that we had in 2016 and 2017, which actually escalated the amount we needed. So, again, we can offer services to the WBA, tents, tables. we needed. So, again, we can offer services to the WBA, tents, tables, the police, waste management. Those are things that are part of the overall contract and are structured so that there's no outlay of additional funds. But at this stage, I'm still going to argue that one of our core things is we invest millions of dollars in our infrastructure and our parks. We have an obligation to our residents and the taxpayers to spend money to maintain them at a certain level. That level being that they're safe, functional, and they operate like they're supposed to.
Yep, I, I, I understand that. I think what, I think what contributed to the, I, I wish if the situation was this dire, I think the time to make the argument would have been before there was any allocation at all for the other barbecue bash.
The original-
Of the 35,000 to the, yeah.
The original calendar that was created by the Department of Planning and Parks, or Planning and Parks Committee, that contains all the events, did not have the barbecue bash on it. It had a footnote that said that it was not included in the 2020 year because of our budget concerns. So the department did think it through, so to speak, and did not include it on the original calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Greg Notting?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I, uh, being one of the people who've been around here the longest, have seen all sides of this issue. I appreciate the fact that you want to have events for the citizens, and just to answer you, Mr. Bowlen, reference to a line item issue, I remember being beaten around the head and neck at the last council meeting over the calendars. Granted, it wasn't as big a chunk of change as this is, but, um, we forewent that. I'm not coming back to the calendars, by the way, I'm not here to discuss that, but I agree with Mr. Vunich on this one. I think this is absolutely positively, uh, something that we need to, uh, take seriously, and I'll tell you why. First of all, the WBA, and some, and you said to the directors here, they don't remember this, Joe probably does, it was me who went around with a legal pad and a pen a number of years ago and literally got some of the businesses to sign up to start an association, and one of the agreements I had with them at the time that they started it, that's when Carl at Wines of Wildwood was here and, and Chris from One Lucky Mutt, was that they would run the business association and would have nothing to do with the city of Wildwood, uh, in terms of its political aspects or monetary aspects, and we in turn would not interfere with them. That was the agreement, and they agreed to that. Over the years, the WBA has had some ups and some downs, as has the city of Wildwood, and that's not to be unexpected. But in most places, chambers of commerce spend a lot of money helping cities, cities to put on events to give the citizens, uh, input to their businesses as well as to promote the city in which they exist. I would encourage the WBA to seriously consider that. I think they can do it. I think they would do it. I'm not asking them to put on mega events that cost zillions of dollars, but they can put on certainly some small ones. I think the balloon glow belongs to them, is that not right, Joe?
In past years, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, there are some things that they can do, and I would encourage that to occur without us having to put money into that particular set of projects. That's another, that's one issue. The other issue is that in the past, we went out and we got a lot of volunteers, back in the days of the Founder's Day, Celebrate Wildwood initially, we had a lot of volunteers. I mean, these were people who did things that did not cost the city a dime. Every old car that was in the parade was not paid for by the city of Wildwood. It was, it was provided by individuals who spent their time, gasoline and money, to come to this parade and to be in the parade. And I think that volunteerism should still continue to be a major issue in this city, and I'll get, I'll bet you that you'll find a lot of people who'll be interested in, in doing some events and putting the effort into it. Let me give you an example of that, just briefly. If any of you have been to the Festival of Little Hills up in St. Charles, that entire event, and I talked to one of the organizers up there, is not paid for in any way by the city of St. Charles. They let them use the street, that's about it, and they provide some degree of security, but the event is entirely paid for privately by private money and from the businesses that exist up there. It can be done. Okay, and then finally, we have a lot of infrastructure. Today, I took another beating around the head and neck by somebody who's demanding internet in his area of Ward 1. Well, I'd love to give him a cable and hook him up, but the problem is that this is not the case. I don't know where he's been for the last, he says he's lived here five years. Don't know where he's been the last five years, but if I'm not mistaken, we've had about 12 years of the World Internet Access Committee, and I don't know how many times I can say what I've had to say about how the city cannot afford to put these kinds of, of structure, infrastructures in because of the cost, it's prohibitive. And after what I saw Saturday in terms of the erosion over on Cox Creek, that's god-awful. I mean, we've got to do something. We've got to find some way to, to try to come up with ways of fixing this stuff before our city washes downstream into the Missouri River. I'm telling you, folks, this council has to be very serious about what it does with its money, you know, and maybe I won't be sitting here in another month, and that's fine, and most of you won't miss me, but that's, that's okay. But you know what? I'm going to be out there, and I'm going to be one of them again, because I've always been one of them. And if you all screw up, I won't be back. Okay? So I just thought I'd let you know that. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Councilor Garitano?
Thank you. Joe, you have the funds to carry you through the mid-year?
That's correct, sir.
You do, okay. All right, um, I just want to kind of restate how we ended up today, because I think it's a good reminder of how we, we've come to this point. We had the line item on the budget, and we discussed that quite a bit. And obviously, from 50, it went to 35, and that's when we heard from the organizer at the time that it was not going to work for them, and therefore they were going to withdraw. So, we heard a lot from the residents of Wildwood about the reaction to that news. They didn't like the news. Now, I think we came up with a good opportunity to organize and hold an event with the money that we have, and, better yet, and I think it's fair that we have to ask the president of the Wildwood Business Association to maybe share some of those details about this event, because the city, at the end of the day, is expected not to fully pay out the full amount there. The money will be returned back to the city for the event. So we got a good deal here. We got a deal where we can offer our residents this event. The residents have spoken very loudly and very clearly, and I'll be on record here that I do support this event. So, we have an opportunity where we can hold this event and partner with an organization, the Wildwood Business Association, who we've partnered with before in other types of functions, and they're going to help organize this event. Give us the transparency. That was a big problem too for folks. They didn't have transparency where the money went. The Wildwood Business Association, now, hopefully I'm quoting you correctly, Emily, you said you'd open up a bank account dedicated just to this, and we would have full transparency. So at the end of the day, this should cost the city about $9,000 if it goes according to plan. Um, I think the Wildwood Business Association probably shares some more details. Emily, I think you said you've already gotten some interest from sponsorships. So, it's a tough situation. I totally understand Mr. Vunich and the Department of Planning, and I'd like to see how we can find a way to make it work. But to throw it away, or to make any kind of motion that completely dismisses it tonight, I don't think's really a good idea, and you know what? I think our residents are going to speak. And they're not going to like the answer, and they're not going to like where it came from. We have to find a way to make it work. We came up with a solution here, a plan that we never had before. Let's try to find a way to make it work here. Therefore, I don't know if this would be probably the best way, but I know we have a motion here on the floor. I don't want to jump to a conclusion, but I would make an amendment to the motion, to postpone this motion for the time being, because I think we have to look at things and see how we can make them work. And we also haven't heard from the Wildwood Business Association. Joe, I want to see how we can help you. I'm committed to that as well.
Thank you.
Postpone to, uh, what time and when?
Well, I think probably 30 days if that worked to get folks together to make it work or, or to find an opportunity. I don't know. I'll look for some input on that.
So a motion to postpone, is there a second to the motion to postpone for 30 days? Seconded by Councilmember Remy. So discussion is now only on the motion to postpone. Um, and by, just for clarification for the benefit of the council, um, and the public, when you say "we find a way to make it work," are you referring to the ad hoc event planning committee? Councilmember Garitano?
I think the ad hoc committee could take that back and look and see, and I would like to work with the Department of Planning and Parks to see how we can find that in the budget.
I believe the ad hoc events committee also includes the city administrator and the director of planning and parks, so if it's that committee and there's not a conflict with another meeting, I'd be more than glad to attend if the five members would like.
So we have a motion to postpone. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilmember Remy?
We do six weeks, so we can have a little more time to go through this, because I think it's going to take more time than that. We've got an ad hoc committee that's going to go through this. What's it?
You're getting, you're running late in planning in your-
So, six weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. If I may, I would, knowing how much goes into scheduling all the things you need to hold a major event on a single day, the less time the better, so I would say no more than 30 days.
Right, no more than 30 days is fine with me.
If we get done early, great. If we don't, we have 30 days.
Postponement then. Can Emily please come and talk a little bit first?
Sure.
Because I would rather do that first before we all start.
Can I speak?
I'll get you on the list. You'll be about third. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Emily, president, president of the WBA. Um, just to address a couple things that I heard, um, the WBA does put on a lot of events that we solely fund ourselves. We, um, did the Halloween walk, which we had about 3,000 participants in. We did the food truck festival, which we're doing again this year. Um, we kind of spearheaded the Winter Festival. The city stepped in and definitely helped us with a little bit with that, but we do do our own events. We're very proud of them. Um, we try to get our businesses and our residents together. That's our whole goal, is to just introduce our businesses to our residents. Um, so part of that was, um, obviously, we weren't like, let's take on this giant bash for the fun of it. So what we did is we saw a need in our community. Um, this bash, me as a business owner here in Wildwood, and I know other businesses, this is huge for us. We make a lot of money. We get, actually get in touch with residents and the surrounding areas, so to lose this bash for the businesses would be huge for us, and we didn't want to do that. So after talking with my leadership team, we decided whatever we can do to step up and help. Um, we came to this thinking that you guys already approved a budget, and we were going to do work within that, but we did one better. We decided to give that money right back to you as soon as we get it. You're right, you're not a bank. We're not asking for a loan. We're just asking for a line item that you guys already had on place, and that we can give it right back to you. That's all we're asking for.
So Jim, since I yielded to Emily to talk, can I just follow up with this?
Sure.
Just a couple questions. So first and foremost, so estimated return back for this is about $26,000, but what that doesn't account for, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't account for the funds that'll actually be generated that can, that are going to be put towards the Winter Fest as well, correct?
That is correct.
So it's actually possible that for this city, we'll wind up in the black with two events for our citizens. Does that sound correct to you?
That's 100% correct.
I just want to make sure, because people I don't think are understanding that. This would be pretty darn unique.
Yeah, so this would be the first time that the Wildwood bash would make money for the city instead of use it. Um, I would love to be able to say we can give you it all back, but I'm hoping for, um, you know, 26, 27,000 back, and that to me is going a little low, because I've already had 10 businesses reach out for $5,000 sponsorships. So we're like, already like overwhelmed with people wanting to do sponsorships.
So on postponement, Councilmember Edens, I have you, Councilmember Werther.
Yeah, yes. Um, I, wouldn't it be prudent during the postponement process before it would go back to the ad hoc committee for, uh, president, um, for the president of the WBA to actually sit down first with our city administrator, Julian and, and Joe, prior to, to coming to the committee? Um, I, I say this because I think if the, if we're going to get multiple department recommendations, that they'd want to give you less, then I think we'd want to know what that would look like in an event. What are, what are scenarios A, B, C, and D flushed out before it goes to the committee? Because I think it's just going to waste time and spend in committee, but if it, if it was already prepared and scenarios were already presented amongst staff and with the WBA, it might go smoother.
We could see if that could be done if this passes. Councilmember Dodwell, thank you for your patience.
No problem. One of my questions was going to be, um, is it possible to move this up to an event that the city already has on the calendar, say the back-to-school event where we have a band scheduled that's in August, correct? And we already have some of the infrastructure in place, or maybe the July, um, band concert, so that, um, we can take your sponsorships, our current expense line item, and still be able to reduce the barbecue bash cost overall, but give our businesses and our sponsorships the ability to talk about themselves, to present themselves to the residents of Wildwood. That was going to be my suggestion.
Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate you coming. I've enjoyed the bash over the years myself, and I think you just made the best case in reasoning for not postponing and for us to go with the primary motion. You said, right here, after the budgetary numbers and back and forth, you said you have 10 businesses at $5,000 sponsorship each. It's $50,000. You're well on your way.
We're well on our way.
You're well on your way.
To returning lots of money back to you.
So the argument really seems to hold that the city's not needed in this particular event at this point. And I, and I would, again, urge council not to postpone this and to go ahead and act on the original motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilmember Bartoni on the motion to postpone?
Yes, and I, yeah, without like, you know, like stepping at it, so to speak, that you did kind of disclose that you have a lot of money and I, but, I mean-
We have people who-
Councilmember Dodwell had a really good suggestion. Maybe we can combine this with another event. This is very important to the city. I mean, obviously, everybody up here has an opinion, so that's why I'm kind of in favor of getting this back to the ad hoc committee, and let's talk about it for 30 days, and then see if we can come up with a better solution. We might be coming back in 30 days with the same thing, but if we do have a better idea, maybe, you know, I think it's worth 30 days to give our residents
Yeah, the interest is definitely there for sponsorship. Like I said, I've had people reach out to me. Did they already sign checks? Absolutely not, because no one knows if this is going to happen. So, but the interest is there. That's why I feel like we can make this happen, but the WBA by itself cannot upfront money to book bands, to have the restaurants, to have the police support. We can't upfront do that. We're just not that big.
Councilmember Garitano?
So with the motion that we have on the floor to postpone, I know you mentioned, but now you just answered my other question. You do not yet have the checks in hand. Therefore, I think we do have to postpone. Let's not rush into this, make irrational decisions. I think we can work on this. Just how we ended up in this situation today, right? Who would have imagined a couple months ago, we thought the barbecue bash was done, and it wasn't going to happen, and we came up with a solution. The business community and the residents said, come up with some good ideas, and it's worked out. So I would say let's postpone. If that works for you and Mr. Vunich, we'll come up with something, and, uh, I feel very optimistic. Thank you.
Councilor Brost?
What I'd like to add is, um, I think we should all be open-minded about the opportunity that working with the WBA, that it could be a new path, and, and it would really have the opportunity to support not only the businesses but the residents. And it, I mean, this is new territory, and I just, uh, throw out and just say, forget it, no, I think is a big mistake, and, and Niles, I know you were very vocal on the barbecue bash, but you haven't had any comment. I would think that this would be something you'd be very excited about as well. So, but that's it. Thank you.
I didn't see anything in our bylaws that said that we were supposed to keep separate from the city. Um, and we're, for one, love to work with you guys. I think that we should be kind of one unit in a way, two separate organizations, but we should be working together. We're, we're in this for the same cause.
Absolutely. All right, uh, see, Councilmember Farmer on the motion to postpone?
One more quick thing. So, I, I agree with Councilmember Brost. You know, I'm on the Watershed Task Force. I was in the creek. I saw all the bad stuff. There are complicated problems in the city that are going to take creative solutions. problems in the city that are going to take creative solutions. And I think I've sat up here a lot and listened about calendars and listened about the barbecue bash, and we have an opportunity to partner with a group that's willing to try to reimburse the city for something that's pretty cool, and if it's done the right way, it could turn into an opportunity to pay for a whole bunch of things that we don't have the ability to do right now. So, you know, if we have to postpone it for 30 days to figure this thing out, I think that's fine. But I will say, you know, outside of doing this, I operate a business too. I used to throw events. You won't get very many opportunities like this. This opportunity goes away, it's going to go to somebody else. Or the WBA is going to keep the money, and we're going to be left waiting to figure out other things. So I agree up here, you need to be very, think hard about this, because I can tell you, where I come from in my ward, I don't hear about a lot of things. I heard a whole lot about the barbecue bash going away. So, you know, there are, this is the one thing that people are really caring for, and this is a unique way to fix it. So, I think we should try to do that.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone for 30 days back to the Ad Hoc Event Planning Committee. Roll call vote on the motion to postpone, please.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Boepp?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
I'm going to support Director Vunich and the City Administrator. No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
So the motion to postpone passes. Thank you, Joe. Moving to the next item, also planning in parks, the renaming of Pond Grover Loop Road.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, when St. Louis County was the jurisdiction in this area that is now Wildwood, they had a plan called the Highway Systems Plan. And part of that plan was to create a loop road around the major intersection of State Route 100 and State Route 109. As the City Council is aware, many things have changed since that Highway Systems Plan was adopted by County Council. There will be no loop road in the future. Therefore, the Administration and Public Works Committee, followed by the Parks and Planning Committee, undertook the task to try to find a name that was more suitable for the Pond Grover Loop Road. Ultimately, a recommendation was made by the Parks and Planning Committee to name it Pond Grover Parkway. That particular name was submitted to the Office of Emergency Management with St. Louis County, and much to our surprise, it passed. So, by a favorable recommendation tonight, the Departments of Public Works and Planning will begin the process to have the Pond Grover Loop Road renamed to Pond Grover Parkway.
Councilmember Edens, and you're looking for a motion to that effect, Joe?
Yes, sir, very much so.
Councilmember Edens?
How much does it cost to replace the metal signs?
Well, that's a very good question.
For the street name change?
And Mr. Brown and I had a earlier conversation. He says he has an idea.
Okay. Come on down.
So, yeah, the, the one issue would be the signs at the intersection would have to be replaced, and when we make the request to move out there, we are expecting that they will make that cost the cities to incur. My estimate is around $10,000 would be the cost to replace the current signs. The good news is the big, large green signs at the approach will, my understanding would be, it will be removed and replaced with smaller signs. So that will be, I think, considerably valuable by many. But the cost that I've, at least on the back of a napkin, I've figured to be about $10,000 plus or minus, hopefully minus.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, I move that we accept the name change from Pond Grover Loop Road to Pond Grover Parkway.
Councilmember Bertolino seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Councilmember Edens, any other abstentions? Motion carries. Moving next to the last item, which is in effect encompassed by the first item and the decision on that, this being the recommendation from the Event Planning Committee, I would ask someone on the council for purposes of consistency to make a motion similar, a postponement similar to the first one, so that both of these will be handled in the same way. Councilmember Dodwell? Move to postpone?
Move to postpone for 30 days.
30 days, the third item, seconded by Councilmember Garrettano. Councilmember, I'm sorry, City Administrator Ansem?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, good evening, members of council. The item on the agenda this evening, what I'm seeking is direction, I guess, or approval from council for the city attorney and I to begin, to begin essentially drawing up a contract. If we are going to head down this road, and even if we are postponing it, I would like some assurance from council that, that you're comfortable with spending staff time with, perhaps sitting down with Ms. Willis and the rest of the WBA, as well as Director Vunich and Director Jackwin, to, to expend the time and effort to put the contract potential together that we can bring back to council once the, once the item's ready.
Sure. Councilmember Edens?
So, will the contract be prepared after the next meeting and any changes are made? Or is it as presented now with the budget requested by the WBA?
Yes, I guess I was a little unclear in terms of the, the decision that was made under the previous item. If we're postponing both items, then that's going to postpone, obviously, the conversation that City Attorney and I need to have with the, with the president.
I mean, I think as a practical matter, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, you don't need 30 days advance notice to do a contract. If we decide, if the council ultimately decides to do this, you can, I think, expeditiously get us a contract in place, isn't that correct? I mean, in the staff time, we do that with everything. So, I mean, that's... Yeah, obviously, we'll work as fast as the council needs us to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edens?
I would just be hesitant about starting a contract without knowing what changes
Exactly.
would be made. I think that would actually waste staff time. And, and I think we're stuck in a loop where it sounds like the WBA could have financial commitments upfront and may not need the money that's been requested, which would be the best-case scenario, but she can't, she can't receive that money until there's assurances in place that it could be covered or, or the event will occur. So we're, we're stuck in this cycle. So I don't think that, I would, I would just wait to see what the committee does before preferring a contract that may not be relevant after a discussion that happens.
Councilor McCune?
It's for the city attorney. So, we did it with the barbecue bash. It's kind of like a contractor's thing. Isn't it pretty boilerplate and just kind of fill in where we're at with the WBA? I mean, there might be two additional paragraphs, but I don't think it's going to be that complex. Am I correct for this contract?
It's a slightly different situation. It'll take some time to put together just a, it's a new user, so it's different details. But, you know, we've got models we can draw from.
Yeah, I was going to say the scope of work would be different and maybe the financials of how we receive and disperse, but I don't think it would be any more complex than that. So, I just don't want to hold that up for something that... So I guess that's what I'm asking is, how would that be any different than just changing those two things out of what we've done in our past contracts with the barbecue bash?
Well, it, it will be different. I mean, I don't want to give the impression that we're just swapping one contract with the other. It will be different. So it will require, and just, it's a matter of just having, sitting down and having conversations, going, going over the details with the other party. I don't think we know the terms yet for you to really answer that. Is that correct? Because the committee, it's been postponed, so we don't really know what you and the rest of your committee are going to do with it, actually. Okay, we'll do, seeing nothing further, we'll do a roll call vote on this motion to postpone as well. Please, Ms. Lowbeck?
Councilmember McCune?
Excuse me. Councilmember McCune?
No.
Councilmember Boepp? Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
No.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Motion to postpone passes. And I think that concludes the work session. Would entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll take a brief break and come back for the rest, or for the main meeting. Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Brost, non-debatable. All in favor of the motion to postpone, motion to adjourn, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned from the work session. Thank you. Oh, I'm doing that automatically. Okay, councilmembers, we're going to be starting our meeting. Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council with the City of Wildwood for Monday, March 9, 2020. Ms. Lowbeck, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember McCune?
Here.
Councilmember Boepp? Councilmember Bertolino?
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Present.
Councilmember Remy?
Here.
Councilmember Edens?
Here.
Councilmember Brost?
Here.
Councilmember Garrettano?
Present.
Councilmember Werther?
Present.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Dillard?
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Here.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Here.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to everyone that's with us tonight and those that are watching. For those that are here and as you are comfortably able, if you would please stand with us to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 24, 2020 work session and regular agenda, meeting agenda, I'm sorry, regular meeting. There are no questions or comments. I entertain a motion to approve those. Made by Councilmember Bartoni, seconded by Councilmember Farmer. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Next, public participation. Just mentioned a couple of comments about that. Public participation is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when the time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. That means interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I would like to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Andy Irvine, Ward 1.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for your public service. Michael Baber wanted to be here tonight, but he has much more pressing issues to deal with. I gave a handout to everybody. Is there anyone that didn't get the handout? While, while I'm speaking, would you mind just going to the three color drawings, A, B, and C? Okay, place them left to right. A is what the neighborhood approved for the first SEUP issued in the history of Wildwood. And you see the gravel, the vegetation, the grass, and then the creek. B is what our neighbor, Valerio Hernandez, was able to, after all the efforts made to conform to floodplain and other issues and engineering studies and all this, just walked in, got it all changed. Okay? None of us in the neighborhood had any input on this. And you see the difference in the gravel on that drawing. C is what we have now, that giant amoeba that is eating up all of this property, and it will continue unless we do something to stop it. Our property values, resaleability, not to mention our quality of life, is being negatively affected by this. It's been going on for 19 months since we began our complaints with the city. Now, there's also a false narrative that is happening that every time they send code enforcement out there, code enforcement finds Hernandez to be compliant. That's a false narrative, and it's an insult to our intelligence. He is operating a business on seven days a week. A week ago Saturday, we had a reporter from West Magazine who was interviewing Michael Baber and I, and he wanted, of course, to get an interview with Mr. Hernandez. And interestingly, as we're standing there at Michael's property, here comes Mr. Hernandez with a big truck pulling a giant trailer with a tractor on the back, and he pulls in, and the reporter goes over to introduce himself, and Mr. Hernandez's first words were, "I have a right to operate my business..." were, "I have a right to operate my business here." Mr. Hernandez, if any of you or your associates are watching, no, you don't, you don't have a right to operate your business in our non-urban residential-only zone neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Brian Leslie.
Good evening, and thank you for your service. I'm here again this evening to speak with you about the internet woes in Ward one. We've heard a little bit about it already. I wanted to be a physical representative of the problems that we're seeing in these areas in the unserved and underserved in that community. I last addressed the council, if I look familiar, I addressed you back in August, and I was admittedly really frustrated at the time with the slow movement. And that's not the case this evening. I'm actually very happy to be here, and I'm pleased to hear about some of the RFP that's closing and some of the work on the Rural Internet Access Committee. I'm highly encouraged, and I'm specifically thankful for councilmembers Jordan and Brost for your work and your dedication to that need and being a voice for those of us that don't have one out in that part of the community. Because it's timely, I did want to reiterate just one thing that I mentioned to you in August, because it illustrates the need after this week's coronavirus outbreak news that's dominated the news cycle. Whether you believe that to be a true pandemic or just a hyped-up political football, it doesn't really matter. Microsoft closed their campuses in Washington State, my company based in Austin, Texas, did the same thing a few weeks ago, and I understand I caught just the end of it, but I understand this happened here in town, too. I believe Bears closed their offices down, and they're forcing everyone to work remotely. The point, remote officing in Ward one or Ward six is inefficient at best, and it's often truly impossible. I know this because I've been trying to do it for the last five years. We pay a premium in Brookhalo subdivision to AT&amp;T, it's literally the only service provider available to us, and the speeds most see are between four and six megabytes down and under one up. The federal guideline for high-speed internet, I think, is twenty-five megabytes down. We live well below the connectivity poverty line despite the affluence of our city. I'm constantly dropped from webinars and conference calls, my peers refer to me as Max Headroom, because video conferencing produces jittery glitchy feeds if it stays connected. Media interviews, which I used to do a ton of, I don't do anymore because I look like a badly dubbed foreign film. I have, on more than one occasion, driven from my house to town center to upload a spreadsheet at BreadCo because my company needed the information back quickly, and it took me less time to drive from my house to upload the file because I have a point seven-nine up, point seven-nine up. I'd encourage you to go look at a download meter and see how long it takes you to download a gig file at point seven-nine or upload one. My son, who I really wanted to be here, because you'd love to meet him, he's a great kid, but he's frustrated because he doesn't understand why it takes fifteen hours to download a game he's going to play for less than fifteen hours. This is what my house looks like. I'm going to close with this, the gap isn't getting any closer the longer we wait to do something about this. The RFP is coming, you're going to have a chance to do something for residents in Ward one and Ward six that needs to be done. It's already been mentioned, the RAIC has been meeting for twelve, perhaps thirteen years now to address this need. I'm hopeful that their work, especially for councilmember Jordan, is punctuated with the approval by this body of a proposal to meet this need for residents. I would suggest to you, this is not a Ward one and a Ward six issue, this is a Wildwood issue. Property values are going to decrease, you are not going to have high wage earners like me wanting to move to Wildwood if I cannot run a business out of my home, if I can't connect to my office VPN, if I have to drive twenty minutes to the Starbucks so I can upload a file to keep my job, I'm not going to be living here. I'm not going to be living here. Councilmember Jordan, I mentioned it a couple times, but I know you're not standing for reelection, and I think you are deserving of the appreciation and admiration of those of us that have been following this for a long time for your work, so thank you very much for representing us, I really strongly appreciate you. I do have a question for the body, specifically for Mayor Boland, councilmember Stevens. I know you're both standing for mayor, you're asking to have that office. I would ask, because you've both said that this is an important issue to your campaign, I want to ask you the question, so you're free to answer if you choose to. If elected, will you commit to guiding the city through the acceptance of a proposal with a sense of urgency to complete this work within the term? What factors, if any, would prevent you from executing an agreement to provide the unserved and underserved with this service in Wards one and Ward six? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
David Hudson.
David Hudson, Ward one. Most of you on the dais, I'm sure, or thank you for letting me speak, most of you on the dais are familiar with the Lisk Fish Farm noise problems from years ago. It started in about twenty-twelve. In twenty-fifteen, the city spent much time and effort trying to resolve that, actually passed a new, some new parts of the noise code that would not allow agricultural activities from increasing the ambient noise on neighboring properties. Unfortunately, the Lisk farm was grandfathered, and it didn't apply to them, so there's been continued problems. In twenty-eighteen, there was much discussion about that, and in twenty-nineteen, the Planning and Parks Commission has a work plan for review of previous changes to the zoning ordinance and noise code for constant emitters of noise that they've been, that's been pending for now going on a year, as a not ready-for-action item. I would like to strongly request that the agricultural activity be removed from that noise ordinance for a couple of reasons. One is, my neighbor, three days after the ordinance was passed, turned on a waterfall. And it turns out that the sound study that was done to, as part of his CUP for that waterfall, shows that the waterfall generates at least twice as much noise on my property as the Lisk Fish Farm does on that neighboring property. However, since it is not an agricultural activity, the noise code doesn't, it doesn't involve, doesn't concern him. Ambient noise increases reduced property values. There, for every decibel of noise increase, the property value goes down substantially. There have been studies showing it can be as much as two percent per decibel, which in my case would be many percent, more than ten to fifteen percent. That's a significant reduction in property value. So I have some personal reasons to do that. Also, this particular ordinance seems to be unusual in that it penalizes an agricultural activity who are usually given leeway because of their benefit to the community and society. This case, he's penalized as being agricultural, making noise, whereas my neighbor has a lawn ornament that makes twice, over twice as, much as twice as much noise and has no consequences. So I would hope that you could expedite the action to remove the agricultural activity from that noise ordinance. Lacking that, this will be another grandfathered issue that will never be resolved in the city of Wildwood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Please add it to the report.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
There are no more speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens, there was a question from the prior speaker directed to you and me, would you like to respond to that question?
I don't think it would be appropriate to campaign from the dais, I would just reiterate the thank you to Ms. Jordan, though, for all her work for her two years on the rural internet, so.
In response to your question, my answer is yes, I couldn't answer the question, the second part about factors, without seeing the results of the RFP. Okay, no further speaker cards, we'll go into the mayor announcements, and there is one I wanted to just mention with the council's indulgence, we lost a civic servant this last week, as you may know, Ralph Stark, who was on the board of the Metro West Fire Protection District, and we have Chief Kraus with us this evening. Chief, would you like to come forward and say a few words about his background and what he did for the department?
Thank you, yes. Thank you to everyone for having me this evening. Director Stark was an eighty-two-year-old that had served this community for about fifty or sixty years. His family is well-known, they're staples here, and he'll be sorely missed by all the firefighters and the people of Metro West. One of the things he always did was he supported us at every turn, any kind of an equipment need or anything that we needed to keep our level of service as high as you all deserve it, he was always right behind us on that. So we just, it's a pretty big loss. Now, at eighty-two years old, he lived a pretty good, long life, and we're going to be there to support his family through whatever happens next. But just if you didn't know him, you missed out because he was just a heck of a guy with a real servant's heart, so I appreciate you having me tonight for that.
Thank you, and we appreciate all you do. And members of the council, without objection, I would ask that we stand for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Thank you again, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, public hearing. Ms. Loebek, would you please read the item?
Liquor license application for Milk and Honey Wildwood LLC, doing business as Milk and Honey, which is located at one-six-seven-six-five Main Street.
Thank you, Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, as with any liquor license, the St. Louis County Police Department, Wildwood Precinct, and the Department of Planning are required to sign off on it, and both parties have endorsed and approved the liquor license for this particular location. I believe City Attorney Young usually has a little script or something, I don't know if we're going to do it tonight, but other than that, the department's available for any questions regarding the location or any aspect of the business.
Thank you, and after determining whether there's any public comment, are you seeking any action, either you or the city attorney from the council this evening?
I believe the city clerk and the Department of Planning would respectfully request approval of the liquor license.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Young, do you have anything to add before we determine whether there are, is anyone wishing to speak on the matter?
I would just like to say that you have presented before you memorandum from the city clerk identifying that the application meets the requirements of the city code, that the liquor, copy of the liquor license application, and also you have available to you through the office of the city clerk, the relevant provisions of the city code.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards, Ms. Loebek?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the council wish to make a motion or otherwise comment? Councilmember Stevens? I'm sorry, you need to turn your microphone on, please.
Motion to proceed with the crafting of the legislation.
I think it's just a motion to, is it a legislation or just to approve? It's just a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Garitano, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Moving next into our legislation, we have one bill, and it is for first reading, Bill twenty-five forty-nine. It's before the council, and it concerns Ward eight, is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Garitano. Second by Councilmember Stevens, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Loebek, please read Bill twenty-five forty-nine.
Bill twenty-five forty-nine, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing certain modifications to existing C-eight planned commercial district ordinance number twenty-four sixty-nine, which governs a mixed-use development located in the city's town center, downtown and neighborhoods, general districts, by allowing for an additional twelve units to be added to the allowable five-story building to accommodate a greater number of residential units, with such being consistent with the favorable action of the Planning and Zoning Commission that is set forth in its February eighteenth, twenty-twenty letter of recommendation on the same.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill twenty-five forty-nine?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, as you may recall, a public hearing was held regarding this requested change by the applicant petitioner. That public hearing concluded, and after discussion, the city council authorized the preparation of legislation. The legislation is in the form as directed by city council, and the department's available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joe? Councilmember Dodwell?
Has the petitioner requested a second reading tonight, or is that not necessary?
The petitioner has not, and I believe the two-week period is acceptable.
Councilmember Farmer?
Was there any further clarification as to what they think they're going to do? Because I kind of feel like last time it was sort of up in the, this is for the prime place, I assume, yes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, there was sort of a vague idea of what was happening, do they, at the planning, did they come up with anything a little bit more solid?
I've had no direct discussions with either party, but I believe Mr. Cohen stated that they are committed to the project and intend to move forward. I think the question is, is just, they may be up to sixty units now, it's just how many one, two, or three bedrooms that'll consist of.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Edens?
I would just request that the petitioners maybe be available for the second reading in a couple of weeks. I know they've really tried and made an effort with that, and hopefully they will have an update on their, on their business plan, so I can address some resident concerns with some more specifics. Thank you.
Councilmember Edens, consider it done.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All right, so that'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting. Moving into resolutions, Resolution twenty-twenty-oh-six is before the council, and it concerns all wards, is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-oh-six? Made by Councilmember Garitano, second by Councilmember Remy. Ms. Loebek, please read the resolution.
Resolution twenty-twenty-oh-six, a resolution of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, adopting an email use policy.
Thank you. Councilmember Garitano, do you or the city administrator wish to speak to this?
Sure, thank you. Council members and mayor, we're bringing back to you this resolution, it was at the request of the council that the Admin and Public Works Committee address certain items, so the committee met, spent quite a bit of time reviewing the policy in depth, and we did come to a point where the policy, we feel, is very good, so those items have been incorporated per the committee, and therefore the original email policy that you saw is now back to the council with those updates.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
So this, this policy doesn't stop anybody from obtaining public information, it just changes how they would go about it. It does nothing to protect privacy, in Section E-three, it says that there are no rights to privacy when using city email. The only thing that this policy does accomplish is it limits the ability to communicate information to the residents, is what this policy is set forth to do. If the city council is worried about Section one-two-five-oh-six-oh-eight-eight, that is the use of city email in this case for personal convenience and profit, there's much more clear examples that the council could address. I had sent everybody the email from the Ward six resident, you know, that she had received the mayor's e-message, which I'll give this to the city clerk to enter it in the public record as well, but everybody received that, and it says, you know, why is this okay? I never sent an email to Jim@bolandforwildwood.com, where did he get my email? He got it from the city server. And, you know, Mayor Boland also came to a Ward eight meeting, public meeting, and passed around a yellow piece of paper and collected email addresses from everybody in attendance. Could there be a more clear example of a violation of one-two-five-oh-six-oh-eight-eight? I don't think so. So is the mayor really going to sign a resolution about this that he himself has blatantly and knowingly violated? So just, you know, this is nothing but a political resolution, and because, like I said, it does nothing to protect the privacy, it does nothing to change anything that has happened previously. And for all the residents who are here that are concerned about internet and traffic safety and stop signs and things that actually care about, you know, the committee spent two hours on this email policy at their last Admin Public Works Committee, and twenty minutes talking about the flooding issues on Centaur Road. serves to stop communications, because during the discussions, one councilmember even said to me, I don't want you emailing-
Councilmember Stevens, please, we have a point of information, which trumps. Please state your point of information.
Point of information, I just want to clarify that the comment by Councilmember Stevens, that this doesn't protect our residents, is not true.
That's not a point of information. That is your-
Councilmember Stevens, I'm the chair of the meeting, so I'm going to rule that. You don't rule on it. Councilmember Garitano, if you'll just wait on that, we'll put you on the list. Go ahead, Councilmember Stevens.
Okay, so, it's clear, this is a politically motivated resolution. It does nothing to help anyone. We should all abstain from participating in this, really.
So, before we call the next speaker, with all due respect, you actually have no firsthand knowledge as to how Mrs. Smith received that email, nonetheless, you commented on it. I will assure you, she would not have received it if she hadn't consented. The fact is, in addition to that consent, the issue before us, which we will need state law to fix, is the using of emails from our newsletter subscribers, which that certainly did not do. Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, this is John, City Attorney. Shouldn't, this is really minor, shouldn't all subsection 8 be highlighted, because these were additions from the last, and anyone casually reading it, we're looking for changes, and this was a major change to the policy, and shouldn't that have been highlighted?
G was revised, and H is all new.
Right. They should have been highlighted and somebody to indicate that, right?
It could have been, certainly.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You typically wouldn't put a red line in the final draft for a resolution, but red lines were available, but I understand the point.
Councilmember Edens?
So, the reason why less time was spent on the public works discussion and infrastructure is because we were all in agreement, and there was, if I remember right, only one item to vote on. The reason why this took longer is because when it was pushed back to committee, there were many concerns that other council members had, and it took time to have a thoughtful discussion, not argument, to try to make sure that we got it right. We're in uncharted territory of trying to make sure that we have something that's a statement of value on the books, but is also enforceable, and is easily understandable for council members to follow, and is presented well to our residents. So, it's not a matter about not prioritizing other public works items so much as it was about making sure that we spent time to present a good document. Secondly, I don't know how this became an argument about the mayor's race. It's not. Most businesses have something like this on the books. This is about using your work email for work and not using your personal email for work, and about how you obtain emails that you're going to use, which requires consent. And disclosures are also a good idea as well, about whether or not the city supports what's it. It's kind of like, you know, you don't always do deep cleaning, right? Because you're trying to keep up with the daily work. In council, we're trying to keep up with the ordinances of things we need to address on a timely manner. You know, you're vacuuming, you're mopping your kitchen, but you're rarely pulling out the stove. So, this needed to happen anyway, but what happened is, as a result of your actions, it's equivalent of spilling something between the stove and the counter, and you had to pull out the stove right then. So, this needed to happen anyway, but there were specific things that had to be addressed because of the lack of acknowledgement that there was an issue in the first place. The other thing is, if you don't have anything on the books, you can't hold anybody accountable. And this is not retroactive. It's not meant to be the boogeyman and go after anybody that's already done anything. It's about drawing a line in the sand when we move forward. That's it.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the point that Councilmember Stevens brought up, that this doesn't protect our residents. In fact, this does protect our residents, and it protects our city. Included in this policy is disclosure. Disclosure for our residents, so that when their private, personal information is accessed by someone through the sunshine law, the city administrator is authorized to inform that subscriber that their information has been disclosed. So, that disclosure protects our residents. It makes them aware of who is getting their information. As well, it gives our city administrator the authorization to send communications, so that this way, if someone does go ahead and get the list and use it, that our city residents are informed that that person is not acting on behalf of the city of Wildwood. So, these two points here, I want to highlight, disclosure and the ability to inform our residents empowers our residents, protects our residents, and protects the city of Wildwood.
Councilmember Dillard?
Well, so, I have several points to make here, but first, a question. Under G, enforcement and penalty, about the third sentence, I think, there's a typo that materially affects the understanding of how this is carried out, and I'll read it as written. "The city administrator shall refer to the city council for action any fourth or subsequent violation of this policy by a city official," or, in the opinion, and it goes on and on. Is that a typo, or do you mean any fourth or subsequent violation?
No, it's the number fourth, so four, fourth violation.
So, you could have three violations of this policy before anything happens?
No, sir. You would, fourth would be an automatic referral to the city council, but it is up to the city administrator, depending on the severity of the violation, as whether it should be referred.
So, what happens to the first three?
Under G?
It depends on the severity of it, but the city administrator has the authority to refer it to the city council.
Okay, so, this leads to my next point. Words have meaning, and when we're talking about governments enforcing actions against independent elected officials, in this case, and their, you know, employees and appointed officials in other cases, there needs to be precision in how we are wording this and interpreting it. Let's go back up to, since we're on G right now. It leads off, "Violationist policy may result in the rescinding of a city official's authority to use city email and/or such other penalties as may be deemed appropriate under the circumstances, presumably by the city administrator." An unelected employee of the city is apparently being given the power to deem what is a violation, what isn't, and penalties as may be deemed appropriate under the circumstances, without any further definition of what that means. That is problematic, just from a government standpoint. You have independent elected officials who are now subject to the subjective judgment of an unelected employee to figure out what is and what isn't appropriate under the circumstances, okay? That's issue number one. Let's go back up and talk about another ambiguity here. D2, because a lot of what this is attempting to prohibit is using city emails, and for those in the audience who are not familiar with this, we're talking about citizens of Wildwood or wherever who give their email to the city in order to get city subscribed lists or things like that. It becomes public information. Any entity, any person, anybody up here, any company can request that list from the city, under applicable open record sunshine laws or whatever might be applicable. What we're trying, I think, to prohibit is use of these email lists for personal gain by people employed by the city or elected by the city. But let's look at D2. Prohibited uses. Use of city email for campaign purposes, fundraising purposes, commercial purposes, or promotional purposes is prohibited. Okay, I think we can come to an agreement, and it would be fairly obvious what a fundraising purpose is, or a commercial purpose. You're asking for money, or you're trying to get business to something. Promotional purpose is a little bit more nebulous, but really nebulous is campaign purposes. What exactly does campaign purposes mean? And just to illustrate my point, I drafted up a hypothetical email that could come from a city council member. In this hypothetical email, I would say this. "I have been a leader," and this, by the way, this would, the hypothetical city council member would obtain the list and send this email to all residents of Wildwood who have signed up for this newsletter. Here's the hypothetical email. "I have been a leader in protecting our zoning regulations, and I intend to keep that pledge in the future. Please come to the next city council meeting and support the defeat of a plan to rezone a portion of town center for higher-density housing. I hope you'll appreciate the need to protect our city from this kind of encroachment. I certainly do, for as long as I'm on the council." Is that political purposes, or is that purposes of the business of the city? Right? It's nebulous. I don't know, I'm still going there.
Would you like an answer to the question, or are you just asking rhetorically?
Well, I'm, for the moment, I'm asking rhetorically, but it's going to come to a concrete answer in a minute. Well, actually, that's, it's a good point, because if the city administrator is being asked to make this determination, I'd like to ask him directly, would that be a political purpose, or would that be allowed use under the business of the city?
The policy hasn't been adopted yet, so I don't feel comfortable necessarily answering the question.
Well, right, but I mean, is this a situation, like, we have to adopt it before you can tell us what it means?
There's a definition in C, for campaign purposes, the city attorney would probably be advising the city administrator. Would you like to answer that, John?
Yeah, the campaign, first, in terms of political purposes, that word wasn't in the provision, so I think you meant campaign purposes, is that?
Email for campaign purposes, this is D2.
Okay, thank you. Campaign purposes is defined to include, but not limited to, solicitation of political support for the senator of any other person, political party ballot issue, or a vote, or fundraising, or other financial assistance for any candidate for any political office. It would not qualify under that section.
You don't think this statement would qualify under that section?
No, I do not.
It's not asking for support for a political candidate, if they're saying that I have been a leader in protecting zoning, and I hope that you understand my commitment to do so in the future?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, I think we can understand here, agree that there's some confusion as to what that might mean, and that's going to fall upon the judgment of who the city attorney is and who the city administrator is, at least for the first three times, I guess. Use of, here's another ambiguity. Moving on. Use of third-party email marketing services. This is what really I am mystified about, really, from a practical standpoint. And I'm going to read it verbatim, it's not that long. "Mass communications sent using a third-party email marketing service shall only be sent by or pursuant to the authorization of the city administrator, upon confirmation by the city administrator that such mass communication applies with this policy. The sending of mass communications using third-party marketing services is otherwise prohibited." Okay, so, let me get this straight. We are bifurcating between allowed uses of the city list based upon how the email addresses are being entered into a database. Is that right?
City Attorney Young?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So, there's a special prohibition against using third-party email marketing services, unless, unless the city administrator confirms that such mass communication applies with this policy. So, what I'm saying is, the messages sent out by any member of this council or whoever the city has any authority over, would, you're bifurcating the approval of the message by the city and the enforcement of the policy based upon who is literally entering the email addresses into the two-line?
If it is in the use of a third-party email service, the answer is yes.
Okay, who's a third-party email service? What if I, what if I give my kid $10 an hour to do it?
That is different than associated with your city-used email, which is what the policy provides for. So, it's the use of a third-party email service that is associated, then, with your city email. If you do it through a private email, it's not covered under the policy.
But this is usual, I mean, third-party email services use your city email address, and they just populate the address line. So, it's coming from you, it's just you're using a plugin to insert this in there. I mean, that's, look, I run a business, that's how every mass marketing email service I've seen works. Maybe the, that hasn't been contemplated here, I don't know.
I'm sorry, is there a question for me on this?
Never mind.
One minute courtesy, one minute courtesy, Councilmember Dillard. You have 10 minutes, you're at nine.
Okay. Look, I think we could go on, there are other ambiguities here. There is a substantial risk that in any political organization, like the city of Wildwood is, that there are going to be disputes over what is campaign purposes, what isn't campaign purposes, what's political, what's not political. We've run into this in the last two years, where the city's social media pages were used for political arguments a week or two before the election. There's always a danger when you put too much power into a city official or city vendors, like a marketing vendor, to let them loose and get into political purposes. That's my problem. I think this could all be solved by just adopting a simple two-part strategy. One, when people sign up for the, turn their email over, and by the way, this is intel state law says otherwise, which you're right on that, I think it's going to take a state law to clarify this issue, but just make it clear to people who are turning in their emails that it's not private and it could be used. And then, second, require anybody sending emails to those people under this policy just to disclaim the fact that they are, this is not coming from the city of Wildwood, this is their own personal email system, and anybody and any other third party can get their emails just like they can, regardless of how it's sent, regardless of the content. And I think the voters of Wildwood, the people of Wildwood are smart enough to figure it out.
Councilmember Dillard, you're well over. Councilmember Bartoni?
Thank you. So, a quick one, a quick and easy one, speaking of typos. On paragraph H2A, it reads, I'll just read the part, the last part of it. "City subscriber has been disclosed to such third party." Is that correct, or what?
That should read, "has been disclosed to such third party."
To such party, okay, thank you.
Let's let the city attorney make sure that's the case.
Are you on the fourth line, towards the end of that line?
H, paragraph 2A, email address disclosure, the third, the last four, the fourth last word.
Oh, okay.
You are correct, it should say "to such party."
Okay, thank you.
Let's let the city attorney make sure that's the case.
Are you on the fourth line, towards the end of that line?
H, paragraph 2A, email address disclosure, the third, the last four, the fourth last word.
Oh, okay.
You are correct, it should say "to such party."
Okay, thank you. So, I think everybody up here, but the only thing we probably unanimously agree on is that our residents' privacy is important, but other than that, I think if, you know, if we just went down the line and everybody came up with their own email policy, we would have 16 different email policies. The point is, we do need to have something in place, and, you know, kind of what Councilmember Stevens was saying, if his accusation about, you know, how the mayor acquired an email address and sent it out is true for the sake of discussion, that's why we need a policy. So, you know, I think it's important that we do have something, and this is, you know, not going to be perfect for me, I doubt if it's perfect for anybody, but it's probably as close to perfect as we're going to get right now. You know, kind of putting this in perspective, for me on a personal note, you know, a friend of mine that we went to college with, he's kind of like one of those organizer guys, and organizes different lunch and breakfasts for our fraternity and stuff, sends out the email, "Hey, we're all meeting here for lunch. If you can make it, great. If you can't, you don't go." He's retired, actually, recently, from AT&amp;T, kind of started another business in real estate, and I'm getting emails from him about real estate. And I'm like, dude, you know, I don't, that's not why you have my email address, it's for the social events. So, you know, it's just kind of like crossing a line or whatever. So, that being said, on paragraph, I guess we're at six, or no, D7. So, email forwarding, email forwarding is prohibited. Is this just straight across the line? Because like, if I get an email from a resident in Ward 2, and I just want to send it to Lauren just so she is, you know, just in the know about it, is that prohibited?
No, email, I'm sorry.
Sorry, City Attorney Young?
No, email forwarding is a defined term, and it's intended to address the automatic forwarding of emails, so that if an email goes to your city account- forwarding of emails, so that if an email goes to your city account, it automatically goes to a third private account. That's prohibited.
Can we clarify that?
It's in the definition.
It is? Okay, then I missed that part. Okay. So, the next question I have on blind carbon copy, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of okay with this, but just from an IT standpoint, and I am not that person by any means, can that feature be disabled? So that there, it can't happen?
City Administrator, answer them?
I can confirm and let you know. I believe it can be, but I can't say with 100% certainty.
Okay, and that way, we would just kind of eliminate that. So, you know, I, like I said, I don't think this is gonna be perfect, you know, there is some checks and balances here with, you know, our city administrator and our council, and, you know, kind of keeping us all in line, but, I mean, I'm gonna support the resolution because I think it is, I think it's very good, but like I said, I think we'd have 16 different ones if we each tried to do what we thought was perfect.
Councilmember Brost?
Yeah, I guess, first of all, if I talk for 10 minutes, please shoot me. What I'd like to say is, I support it. We need to, you know, get something in place, we, we need to have something to, to the extent possible and consistent with the law, protect the privacy of the residents, and that's first and foremost. So, I, I hope that we move forward with this, and we get back to work. Earlier this evening, Mr. Vunich brought up a lot of things that are much more important than this email policy, that probably is more of an issue of the people up here than the residents of Wildwood. Thank you.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, I, I'd like some clarification on the blind copy, why is that prohibited, and why is the forwarding email prohibited? Because my concern is, I get an email from a resident asking for an answer on a particular issue, then I go back to the city administrator, or one of our directors, and ask for information, and sometimes I just forward their answer to them. So, is, is that gonna be prohibited now?
City Attorney Young?
To answer the blind copying question first, if I may, the intention there is for records preservation, to make sure that we are maintaining accurate records of communications. The second, to your question about forwarding, the answer is no, that would not be a violation. Again, the definition of email forwarding is set forth in the policy, provides, it simply applies to the automatic forwarding of emails. And I'm gonna date myself a little bit here, but we used to call them POP accounts, where you'd get something to one email, or four different email accounts, and have them all sent to one. That's what's prohibited, is to have it automatically forwarded to a second account.
Councilmember McCune?
Thanks. I was in committee with this, and we had a great discussion, and I think that we worked well, and it was very respectful. Tonight, as presented, as my concern was at, at the admin level, I have an issue, and I just wanna kind of comment on Councilmember Dillard's comment, and that was my question at committee, is that appointing the city administrator as the authority to have discretion over disciplinary, or try to dissect when it is a violation, or when it is not, was my concern. I felt that it should be directed to the city attorney only. As you could see, he gave a great example tonight. City administrator was put on the hot seat, where all the political people that had put him in that seat, and were putting him in a political arena. It made him uncomfortable. City attorney is more comfortable by distinguishing, and could answer that question immediately, to say what is and what isn't. So, for that reason alone, I don't feel comfortable putting the city administrator in that position for any of us, and I'm thinking future, because not all of us will be here, as we get elected in and elected out. So, for that reason, I cannot support this. But everything else, I thought that we did great, I don't have too many concerns, but for that reason alone, I cannot. But, and then my second part is a question for the mayor, I guess, or the city attorney. Councilmember Bartoni brought up possibly a modification on the blind copy, which I agree, I think that that's reasonable, but will that change, or does this need to be postponed, because we're making adjustments to this policy now? Because I don't think we can decide if it's not in solid form, am I correct? Or is this gonna postpone it? He's asked to have it turned off, city administrator's gonna do some homework, so I don't think that we can adopt it if he's got homework to do.
City Attorney Young?
I, I ultimately don't think that impacts the policy itself, it's more just the implementation of it.
Well, he asked it to be removed, from the policy, if you can disable it, and city, city administrator said that he was gonna look into it and advise.
Okay, I may, I may have missed that as a suggestion.
I just asked, can it be removed? I mean, if, but I wouldn't want to.
And he's gonna do some homework on it, so I don't know.
I wouldn't want to delay, I wouldn't want to delay that sort of thing either.
It's just a question.
Yeah, I would just say, so, it's possible, even if the answer to that is yes, that a new council member or city official comes on board, it's not implemented in a timely way, and a blind copy is done, so that would mean this policy is not necessarily as written, mutually exclusive with that question, I guess.
It was just more of a question of, if we're making changes, just kind of learn the process, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dodwell?
Okay.
Councilmember Stevens?
I know some of you talked about protecting privacy, but I'll just reiterate, there's nothing private about city email, and you don't want city officials to have private meetings with developers. You don't want city officials to have private emails.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens, that's not germane to the issue, this is about in email policy, it's not about attacking someone because you think they had a private meeting with a developer, with all due respect.
And also, when it comes to forwarding emails for personal use, again, you're putting this on the city administrator, because on D9, it says, you know, the forwarding, copying, or disseminating of, you know, city information through city email is prohibited unless it's being done with official city business, and then that you're leaving that up to the city administrator to decide what is official business and what is campaign business. And that's, one, it's just not fair to him to have to make those decisions, and this, there's just so many holes in this, because it's not being done to protect privacy, it is being done for political gain.
And we can't impugn motives, and that's in the code, and we've heard that before. And we're gonna send you the citation to that, so we don't have that again. All right, Councilmember Remy?
So, a couple of things. So, first and foremost, I worked for a government entity, which I still am a special volunteer, and I believe Dr. Greg Noni also has an email address from that same government, which restricts us far more than, than this, far more. In fact, we're also held to the Hatch Act, and folks lose their job, not uncommonly. This would be exceedingly lenient. Under those two entities that the two of us work for still, or, or special volunteer for, if you will, under the executive branch, there is in fact a non-elected official that actually does review that. We have both an ethics person and an inspector general that does this, they do this for a living. And so, I don't have a problem with our city administrator doing this, because that's well within the purview of an administrator's job, at a lot of different other municipalities. And I do agree that it is difficult, but in those difficult circumstances, it would be incumbent upon the city administrator in consultation with the attorney, to then punt it to the city council, if there's any ambiguity in that, to let the city council decide upon that. Now, I do think it's important for us to have this email policy for a number of reasons. I mentioned the Hatch Act, we do actually have Missouri Election Law 115 dot, point 646, which actually forbids solicitation of citizens via government email address in the promotion against a ballot measure. Not having this in place puts our city at liability. Sending out emails regardless of the intent puts our city at a liability, we can't do it. We just had a Ward III meeting, and we had a survey, and one of the questions had to do exactly to this issue. 99% of those people, as Councilmember Dillard knows, supported having protections in this form, and actually spoke to that in their comment sections. So, I will support this, because I will support what my ward is telling us that they would want in this circumstance.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
So, a few, I think it was last week now, we had a League of Women Voters thing, and I said at that time, I genuinely enjoy working with everybody up here, and I genuinely do. I think that everyone that is up at this dais believes that what they're doing is the right thing for the city, at that time, there may be disagreement in it. But, this city needs an email policy. You cannot legislate morality, which is what this is, it's impossible to do. I have been on the city council since September, and I cannot tell you how much email policy conversation I have been subjected to. This should not be this difficult. This is a simple question of what is right and what is wrong. When members of my ward email me, they are asking my opinion, or they are telling me they have a problem, I, it is not up to me to take that and turn that into anything. It's their job to communicate to me as a city official, that's what they're doing. They're not wanting to be sold to, they're not wanting to be propositioned, and the more that you do that, the less people are wanting to talk, and that is what gets us into the trouble that we are sitting in now, all over the place. So, I am going to, to appoint, or approve of this policy, which isn't the world's greatest policy ever written, because I, like Councilmember Remy, am subjected to all kinds of different policies that are significantly stronger than this. But we have to have something. It's not punitive, it's not retroactive, it's moving forward, it's just giving everybody up here the option to take a pause before they do something that they maybe have not fully thought through. That's all it's going to do. That's it.
Councilmember Edens?
Thank you for that, I really appreciate the comments that you made. I just wanted to address some of Councilmember McCune's concerns. We went back and forth on this on committee, because, you know, there's a lot of folks that haven't watched a three-hour meeting. We, we tried to kind of balance any concerns about just the city administrator handling it, so if you notice the last sentence in G under enforcement, there is a mechanism in there that encourages the consultation with the city attorney. And we started with just the city administrator sending it to council, then in the meeting, we went just to the city attorney, and then sending it to council, and then by the end, we ended up with the city attorney and the city administrator then sending it to council. And the reason we did this was because we felt like there would be such minor infractions that did not warrant anything other than a warning, and would waste a considerable amount of time and billable hours. But, part of the discussion was on how much our city, city administrator would be comfortable with making these decisions. Councilmember McCune did ask at committee, we were concerned, we were concerned about that, and our city administrator, Sam, said he felt very comfortable making some of these decisions, especially with the ability to consult with the city attorney, because that's part of what he's hired to do, is to make decisions, whether that be from an HR standpoint about compliance and rules violations on a daily basis. So, I just wanted, wanted that on the record, that we, we did take all of these concerns and Councilmember Dillard's concerns into consideration, and this was sort of the best compromise that we found.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yeah, took, two quick points and then a follow-up question. One, I do think, I mean, I appreciate all the work that people have put into this, I understand that it's, it's a daunting task, and part of the daunting task, the nature of it, is the fact that it is so nebulous, you don't have state law to protect you, and emails are public information, and there's really, as Councilmember Farmer said, you can't legislate morality, and that's a lot what this is, is it requires judgment, judgment everywhere down the line. The problem, of course, is that in any government, judgment is often subjected to political motives. That was my point before. I do wish we had spent the time, despite the good effort of the people who wrote this, I wish we had been spending our time and resources finding ways to get, to make sure everybody in Wildwood can actually get email, like Mr. Leslie referenced earlier, rather than how they get it, and who they get it from, and what the content is. You know, it'd probably take him a good five minutes to figure out how to, you know, to download the unsubscribe button on any email, that any of us could do in, in a half a second. Back to my point of clarification, though, when I mentioned why we're, why this strange to me bifurcation of mass communication is in there, I think City Attorney Young, I'm gonna ask you for clarification, you said that was meant for third parties who are sending it out under a different email address? Or it's like, I mean, what, I mean, what's the bifurcation there?
City Attorney Young?
Just to be clear, are you referring to the use of a third-party email service?
A third-party mass communication, yes.
The third-party mass communication is intended to apply only to the, you know, when, when used under your city email address.
Right.
If you do it under your private email address, city has no jurisdiction.
Right, I get that, but my point is, what you're saying is, if, if we hire a third-party email to send to 25 or more persons in a year, a substantially similar message, it falls under a totally different category than if we type in the email addresses ourself.
It would, it is different in that there is a prohibition unless it is reviewed and confirmed by the city administrator.
Right.
But if you send a mass communication, in any event, there's regulations on mass communications.
Well, it actually says "or" by an external, it says, you, so I think you're, you might look at the definition, I think the answer is, if somebody did in, what he's saying in the hypothetical, it would be covered, because it's, there's an "or," it's communication by city email, or by, by or through 25 and so forth.
Right, and I guess, I mean, maybe, maybe it's a miscommunication.
Well, let's let the city attorney answer then, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, because earlier, when I said, you know, while I was trying to figure it out, and I said that it, these are set up to, to come from your actual email address, that you're hiring it to come from, I was kind of met with blank stares, and I mean, the, the definition is communication of mass communication, it's communication by city email, or by, or, or by or through a third-party email marketing service that identifies the email being from a city email. Okay, so, in the enforcement, because I'm, how in the world would you know that it's been sent out by a mass email communication party, third-party? How do you know?
I don't have a whole lot of experience with them, but the ones I have seen do say on them somewhere that it was, the email was generated by...
But they don't have to.
They don't have to, I, like I said, but the ones that I know. And again, in terms of the factual evidence gathering, that's not in the policy, the question is, if you have the evidence, you apply the policy.
I just don't understand.
And to give guidance, so people wouldn't do that in the first place.
I just don't understand the distinction of saying, it, it's okay to send out an email to 24 people if you type in the names yourself, or...
It doesn't say that.
Well, or 20, okay, 100 people, the bifurcation is between sending it out yourself, or hiring a third-party mass communication to do it, I just...
It prohibits both. Councilmember, Councilmember, we have a call to question by Councilmember Dodwell, is there a second to a calling of the question? That is seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. Calling the question will take a two-thirds vote of the body, it is non-debatable. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your right hand. High, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Calling the question passes, so the council will vote, roll call vote on the motion, which is to adopt Resolution 2020-06.
Councilmember Boeb?
He doesn't know what he's doing.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Abstain.
Councilmember McCune?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Resolution 20-20-06 is adopted. Moving to Resolution 2020-08, it is for the council, and it concerns Ward I, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-08, made by Councilmember Brost, seconded by Councilmember Greg Noni. Ms. Lowbeck, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2020-08, a resolution... Sorry, by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, to release an allocation of $10,000 from the 2020 fiscal year municipal budget to the Pond Athletic Association, PAA, for the purpose of supporting local youth athletics, and to further the city's goal of enhancing the availability of recreational programming activities for its residents.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, and members of city council, at tonight's work session, the report from the Planning and Parks Committee was available for comment, there were no comments, the resolution reflects the action of the committee, and is in appropriate form for final action tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Seeing no question, Councilmember Werther?
Mr. Vunich, I know it's stated in the resolution, but as in past years...
Mr. Vunich, I know it's stated in the resolution, but as in past years, the, the money that's dedicated here is strictly for the youth programs, the introductory leagues with Pond Athletic Association, as it's been, as it has been in the past.
Yes, the representative from the Pond Athletic Association that provided the information to the department regarding last year, said that again this year, the money will be dedicated toward the training league, which is the entry level at the Pond Athletic Association.
Thanks for the quick word on training, because I know they had a specific phrase for it, so I appreciate it, thank you.
It's not my term, theirs.
Theirs, yeah.
Any other questions for Joe? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2020-08, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Moving into resolution, I'm sorry, miscellaneous, we have one receipt in file, Joe, you want to speak to that?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, as you know, the Missouri American Water Company has been working with the city of Wildwood in the deployment of data collection units for their electronic meter reading system. I am proud to announce that the final three site development plans associated with this effort were completed by the Planning and Zoning Commission a week ago Monday, and the item is for receipt and filing, and the department will be glad to answer any questions regarding the matter.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Just real quickly, Joe, when are they going to be placing these out there? Obviously, the weather is not in the best form to do that right now, but will it be finished before fall hits here, do you think?
If you talk to the gentleman that represents Missouri American Water Company, they'd like it done yesterday, so I know they are anxious to complete it.
Perfect, just like to close the loop on this one.
So would I, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to adjournment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Councilmember Brost, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, non-debatable, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand adjourned, thank you.